Well, good evening, everyone. We would like to call our January 13th, 2025 Fivel City Council Meeting to order. Welcome all those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remotely. At this time, as with every meeting, we start with the invocation. We'll ask that Apostle Karen Hale from New Life Ministries. What, join us here, Apostle? How you doing? All right, if we could all stand for the prayer, immediately following the prayer, if we could do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. Father, we come to you this evening first to give you thanks, oh God. Thank you for this meeting. We thank you for allowing us to come together in this new year. We pray now, Lord, that you would bless the mayor. We ask you to bless the council. We ask that you would give guidance on tonight, that it be decent and order. We pray, God, that there would be wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We pray for dignity. We pray for unity. We pray for peace. And, God, we just want to say thank you for all things, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apostle, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mayor.
My neighbor across the street.
Yes, sir.
Would you maybe tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry?
Okay, I'm Apostle Karen Hale, New Life Ministry pastor and founder. We are located directly across the street from Colvin Funeral Home, 2015 Murchison Road. We've been in ministry for 22, almost 23 years, and we are glad to be in the community. We do also have a seminary school, theology school, that we offer, associate's, bachelor's, master's, and doctoral program.
Wow.
And so, we're just glad to be in the community and to serve in this capacity.
We appreciate you. Thank you for the work you do in the community. Thank you for giving us the prayer tonight. Counsel, as we move to the next item, we have announcements. I'll go to Councilwoman Banks McGilofler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Happy Founder's Day. This is the 112th Founder's Day, so congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, happy Founder's Day to ladies of Delta Sigma Theta. Also, Counsel, as we move to our announcements and recognition, we have very special recognition and designation to one of our very own, who keeps us all together around here, in addition to the other members of staff. But right now, I'd ask that Deputy Clerk Jennifer Ayers would meet me at the podium, and I guess Mayor Pro Tim, will you read this?
I would be honored to.
This is a great day for all of us. We all feel like we're celebrating one of our own family members. The Master Municipal Clerk Program is the second and more advanced of two professional designations granted by International Institute of Municipal Clerks. The MMC program is an advanced continuing education program that prepares participants to perform complex municipality duties. The program has an extensive and rigorous educational component and add a professional and social contribution component. The MMC applicant must demonstrate that they have actively pursued education and professional activities. Congratulations. Would you like to say something, Ms. Ayer?
You left too quick.
We know somebody that can turn it on.
Because she controls all of it.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you very much for being so gracious in giving me this award, or presenting this award for me. It's taken me many years to get this, and the certification has been well-used and will continue to be well-used in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, you know, Jennifer's very modest, and she's typically behind the scenes, but she really keeps everything running along with, of course, the clerk, Pam McGill. But this is a unique designation that just shows the experience of it, and think about the importance of what the clerk does. They keep the official records of everything that happens in a city or jurisdiction for years and years, so it is important that it's accurate. Jennifer, thank you for investing in that extra training. Thank you for what you do for us. Counsel, we also have some heroes in our community that went, when duty called, to assist the people of Hurricane Helene, members of our first responders. If they could meet me at the podium, we have several coins and just tokens of our appreciation. So, I'll meet you down there.
So, Mr. Mayor, when I was walking downstairs to come to the diocese, they were all outside, and I looked at every one of them and said, "I'm going to butcher some of your names, and so, I'm going to apologize at the beginning, but in advance, I'm going to apologize, but thank you for all your hard work." So, I guess I will call the names, and you can come up. Gregory Baxley. Patrick Bradley. Okay, wait a minute. I thought it would go in alphabetical order. Is it Joshua Elmore? Okay, Joshua Elmore. Jennifer Jen Singer? Tri Singer? Guy Singer. Okay, first one. Nicholas Gillette?
Nicholas.
Gillette? Not here. Albert Lockamy? Jeffrey McPhail? Shane O'Neill? David Reitmeyer? I'm going to butcher it. Larry Stollnaker? Not here, okay. Matthew Taylor? Zachary Wages? Patrick Bradley? Thomas Farrell? Want me to go faster? Greg Gildner? Noah Jackson? Marcus Matta? Romi Melvin? Robert Owen? Stacy Ritchie? Christopher Suggs? Donald Tashida? As I've messed it up, what is it? Cheeta? Franklin Westbrook? Cody Conrad? Jonathan Ferguson? Alexander Grantham? Eric Lachis? Lachis? Lashy? Lassage? Patrick? Patrick McArdell? McCardle? Okay. My last name is Johnson. Brian Memes? Spencer Rowell? 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 Row. Richard Abraham? Trabram? I'm just guessing up here now, y'all. Tabraham, okay. And then Wesley Van Anan. Did I get everybody? McGally? I don't have Carter Sutton. Lan- Lionel Muniz? And Aaron Colbert. Do I have everything?
I think they should do the sorority stuff.
Just don't be taking them now. Tell us when.
I thought you were up front, Mr. Mayor.
One more, one more.
Thank y'all. Thank you. As they move out, let's give another round of applause for our first responders. We never can say thank you enough for the people that answer the call when we need the call answered. So, thank you, and not only for rendering services for this community, but to show the neighborly spirit to go to the western part of North Carolina. So, thank you all. All right, Counsel, as we move and proceed with the rest of the agenda, moving now to 5.0, the city manager report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, our Blood Police Chief has announced that he is retiring later this year. And in anticipation of that, we are moving forward with our recruitment process for our next chief, and I'd ask HRD Director Jerry Clip to come forward and very briefly outline for the council and the public our search process and how the public can get involved.
Mr. Clip, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Counsel. So, briefly, we've chosen Developmental Associates, which is the same agency that we used before for our previous police chief recruitment. And what they typically do is they begin with doing an assessment of understanding what we want in a police chief. So, it's kind of the DNA that we're looking for, what is important, what are the qualities that we're looking for. So, in that first process, it'll involve, of course, all of you as members of the council. It'll involve the senior leadership team, many of the police staff, and many of the community members as well that we've invited to attend that. And typically, what they ask Developmental Associates, they ask the questions, "What are the biggest challenges and opportunities facing the Fayetteville Police Chief over the next one to three years?" So, they'll be asking that question. "What are the top three to five priorities or issues that the chief needs to focus on?" And then, "What are the most important knowledge, skills, and abilities this individual must have?" Once they do that, and they get all of that feedback, they're going to create a profile or DNA for the next police chief. They will do a customized application and then go ahead and post the position to begin the recruitment process. During the beginning of when the position is actually opened, we're going to do also what's called a realistic job preview, where applicants can call in, and they can do it anonymously, and they will have an opportunity to speak with our current chief on kind of what's the day in the life, what's the community like, what are the priorities and things like that going on at this time in our community. And we'll also have our city manager on the line as well to share his expectations of the next police chief. Once the position closes online, then the candidates will come to us, and Developmental Associates will provide some information on each of those candidates. We'll narrow down the list to the top 10 candidates, and then Developmental Associates will again conduct a more thorough second-level screening, which includes calling the applicants and having interviews on the telephone and doing electronic survey questions and things like that. Then these candidates will then come back to us, and we'll narrow the list down to the top three to five candidates. And at that point, then the finalists will be scheduled for an assessment center, and that's where they walk through typically three or four different exercises, and they'll all be scored, and then we'll come up with scores for each of those finalist candidates. In the meantime, we'll also have meet and greets with the city council here in a council meeting, the police foundation, the community, the police department, and others as we collect feedback for the selection of the final candidate. So, that's kind of the process we're going to work through.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Clip? Mr. Clip, I did have one, just for public knowledge. I know we talked briefly about it upstairs. So, as you do these outwardly and inwardly facing meetings, maybe more aligned for Mr. Hewitt. Mr. Hewitt, the process that the city council have to kind of articulate the characteristics that we're looking for in the next position, can you talk about when you bring that to us?
Yes, sir. We are very desirous of having the council's feedback in this in particular. And so, I think in, not next week, but the week after, we have dedicated time for the council members to meet with our consultant Developmental Associates. And they know our community very well. They assist us in all of our promotional processes at the police department. Have been instrumental in the last two chief searches, and I think Director Clip mentioned it. But if we continue as we've done in the past, in this room, we'll have also a community interview process whereby the candidates will be presented, and we'll be able to take questions from the community as well. But well before that, Mayor, you are correct, we'll do as we've done in the past, where the council will have an opportunity to help inform the candidates, and myself, and the community as to what the council believes we need in our next police chief.
So, is the position posted now?
The position is not posted at the moment, but when Developmental Associates activates it, they are already tickling, shaking the tree of candidates who they know of who might be interested in this opportunity. And, but I think it all begins in the next, the meetings with the council is it?
19th and the, I'm sorry, the 29th and 30th? No, 27th and 30th.
Yes, one day before my birthday and two days after.
All right. Let's just start that birthday conversation. All right, speaking of birthdays, we would like to wish Councilmember Benevente happy birthday. Sir? Give him a round of applause for getting old. All right. All right, Counsel, thank you, Mr. Clip. All right, Counsel, we'll move to 6.0, the agenda approval, if we could entertain a motion. All right, Councilmember Thompson, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion on said motion. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for action on that. Who are we missing, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries. All right, moving to 7.0, the All right, moving to 7.0 is the public forum. Per city council policy 120-9, this is a time that residents may have an input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Public forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes each to address the council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to any other speaker by another speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's forum should have signed up with the office of the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM today on the day of the meeting. When a city clerk calls your name, please approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light located on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. And when the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers on the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum list of speakers. With that, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, Mayor, we have eight citizens signed up for this evening. Our first citizen is Mr. Chad McKeon.
Kraken Skulls. What's going on, Chad? How you doing?
How you doing? My name is Chad McCowen. I am, my business is located at 822 Shannon Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina, just off of Bragg Boulevard. So, I am the CEO of Kraken Skulls and soon to be Kraken Customs, the building right next to Krispy Kreme that you guys have all probably seen as you're driving by it. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for me to sit here and talk with you guys today, Mayor, all the councilmen, city manager. So, I'm here to share a vision for Bragg Boulevard that combines revitalizing its rundown buildings with fostering businesses, business opportunities, turning it into a thriving hub of commerce and community life. There is a negative perception of the area. However, Bragg Boulevard has always been a key artery of Fayetteville, connecting our city to Fort Liberty, previously Fort Bragg. These properties on Bragg Boulevard at this point have potential to be transformed into vibrant spaces for small businesses, startups, and community initiatives. We can do this together and change the comments from, oh, it's on Bragg Boulevard, to, ah, the boulevard's cleaned up, it looks badass. I am personally willing to invest in purchasing and rehabilitating many of these properties, but I need the city's help to make this vision a reality. The city's planning and development department is difficult to navigate for a person like myself. I believe creating programs that make the city-owned properties maybe accessible for redevelopment through grants, low-interest loans, or reduced-cost sales would be a significant step forward in the right direction. Simplifying the permitting and inspection process, as well as offering incentives for entrepreneurs, especially those focused on small business development, would further encourage the actions. Beyond the buildings themselves, we must invest in the infrastructure, improvements enhancing lighting, adding city-paid sidewalks and pedestrian passageways for bike lanes, and focusing on beautification efforts like landscaping or public art will make the area safer and more inviting for residents, businesses, and visitors. We should also market Bragg Boulevard as Fayetteville's business gateway, building a cohesive identity that attracts regional and national investors while celebrating our local roots. By focusing on veteran and military family-owned businesses, we can align this revitalization with Fayetteville's unique identity and values. At Kraken Skulls, we have family members, which we call our customers, that travel from all around the nation, from Texas, Florida, and New York, just to come and get a haircut and a tattoo at my location. This is more than economic growth. Revitalizing Bragg Boulevard is an opportunity to breathe new life into a vital part.
Chad, I think the timer's ringing.
Roger that.
Was that the timer, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It can, it's not displayed, so if y'all can...
No, it's not popping up.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, in my closing comments, I appreciate you guys' time. Obviously, I'm here and I'm new at this, but I love seeing all your faces, and you guys all do amazing things for the city. So, I appreciate it.
You too. Thank you for your, thank you for your good work, Chad.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst. He's showing here. Here it's working.
So, it's tracking on your end? All right, I think we extended Chad's about 20 seconds, so we want to make sure we equitable. But if you, can you track it while we do, while we do it? You have it working over there, right? Are you able to display it on the TV alarm? Can they pop it on television? Give us a minute. Let me see if they'll get it worked out. All right, well, the clerk has it. You're tracking it. Mr. Hurst, if you could? Yeah. So, you all, have your alarm set at one minute, that way I can signal the speaker.
It's set for three.
Okay, when it gets down to one, let me know, so I can let them know.
You mean 30 seconds before? The beeper is still giving off.
Oh, it's still beeping, okay. All right. All right, we'll listen now for it. Yes, sir, Mr. Hurst.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the public. I would like to start by saying that do not take my following comments as being too harshly. I'm very much conscious that every right that my culture enjoys in this country, other cultures march with us, file litigation with us, and we had judges on the bench. First and foremost, let me start by saying, the nine military bases that was changed in this country recently, they was changed for a reason. They was named by individuals who had slaves, beat slaves, raped slaves, and killed them. There is no building in this country, they call the United States, that is named after a person of color who assaulted Caucasian citizens, raped Caucasian citizens, hung them or had them as slaves. So, for anyone to come before a body of government anywhere and still say they still gonna call these nine bases by their former Confederate treasonous names, it's a slap to everyone who laid the foundation for the name change. North Carolina is a state of challenges. We have a challenge before the North Carolina Supreme Court right now concerning 60,000 votes for Ms. Riggs. That's a challenge to the voting procedure in this state. It will not stop with the challenge of 60,000 votes. You give them one step, they're gonna take a mile. We must all be diligent and pay attention. Thirdly, the gentleman just brought up the name of Bragg Boulevard. That name needs to go away also. That's still inflammatory to anybody who pay attention to history. It needs to be changed and wiped away. I agree with the gentleman before me when he says something needs to be done with that area to make it more productive for this city. Josh Stein, while he was running for election, recommended the Sentinel Review. And one of the main cases he wanted to review was the Jada Johnson case. I don't know what happened, who dropped the ball, who changed their mind, but if not for the Johnson case, we have other cases. Right here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, two years ago, we had a hate crime on Skybow. Young military vet was murdered right in front of Enterprise. And if it wouldn't have been for a diligent citizen down in the cafeteria at the courthouse, they was already plotting, and they got it on tape. Don't take my word for it of having a hung jury or having it thrown out. Hate crime right here. You ain't got to look to other cities, Chicago and New York.
Is that 30-second beep, or is it...
No, that's the end, sir.
That was the end?
That's three minutes.
All right, go ahead. We got 20 seconds, because I gave 20 seconds previous.
I'm gonna close by saying, just closing about the comments about crime. Everyone's worried about crime, but to enjoy, to address the issue of crime, you must address the economic issue, economic slavery, and former slave states. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Our next speaker is Ms. Katerina Cunningham.
Good evening, Ms. Cunningham.
Hello, I'm doing fine. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff. My name is Katroya Cunningham Johnson. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on behalf of the forgotten generation. Right now, I'm gonna make it really short and brief. I want to talk about the loneliness and depression in our seniors' nursing homes. Research states that residents are really lonely right now. What we do, me and my two girls, including my husband, we visit nursing homes. And we have an organization called Seniors You Are Not Forgotten, where we go and we visit our nursing, visiting nursing facilities. We have a business that's located on 5404 Yakken Road. Our proceeds go towards assisting our seniors. We have events, in the future, we plan to have events, and shopping where we can have our seniors come out and shop for out, for their outings. We always look for resources that will help mitigate the loneliness that our seniors are suffering at this moment. Me and my girls, we started out as just going in and seeing with the seniors, and then we noticed that the seniors really needed our company there. There's so many seniors in the nursing homes that are lonely, and they are forgotten. And I have been called to make sure that our seniors are aware that there are people that do love them and we are concerned about them. So, I'm asking if the city could please partner with me with making people aware what Seniors You Are Not Forgotten is doing within a community. Age well, as I said, we have a thrift store where throughout donations, we take our proceeds and we provide for our seniors within the nursing homes. And I would like to see if anyone could give me some information that it could help me pull in more volunteers. Right now, I have one volunteer from Juvenile Restitution, but I'm looking for more volunteers to go out with us and be a part of our organization. Let's not just visit the seniors, but we must strive to make a compassionate movement that will positively impact their lives in the world around us. Join us in making the lives of our seniors so much better. Thank you so much.
Ms. Cunningham, I would encourage you to call Community Development. We have a micro grant program that may fit some of what you're doing, and it opens up funding February, first of February, so I would check with Community Development. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Austin. Mr. Michael Austin. Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Rain Drive. We're here to urge the city council to adopt the Sentinel Event Review Process as recommended by current North Carolina Governor Josh Stein. The SCR is designed to examine why a negative, lethal, or catastrophic event ever happened. Last week's council vote to reverse course on implementation of the SCR was deeply problematic for a number of reasons. Abdicating your responsibility to ensure justice on behalf of the residents of this city will never be sufficient. The city bears responsibility in lethal interactions between the police and residents. Jada Johnson was a 22-year-old mother shot 17 times during such an interaction. There should be urgency around avoiding the loss of life. Najah Hagens, Shakur McNair, Lawrence Graham, Joshua Oxendine, DeMarcus Brody, and many others deserved similar examination. That long list of police homicides is evidence that Fayetteville City Council has repeatedly failed to develop measures of transparency and accountability. This group of leaders has a chance to work towards correcting that now. I get asked frequently about the council and why it fails to move forward on common-sense policy changes like the SCR. My answer for years now has been, it's just an overall lack of moral leadership and collective tendency, the collective tendency to do the least when the urgency of the moment very clearly demands that they do more. We're at the point, again, where the council could execute based on the guidance of the staff attorneys, yet chooses to kick the proverbial can down the road. As we near the celebration of life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on the 20th, reminded of his words, Dr. King said, "What is needed is a realization that power without love is reckless and abusive, and that love without power is sentimental and anemic. Power at its best is love implementing the demands of justice. Justice at its best is love correcting everything that stands against love." I find encouragement and spiritual renewal when thinking about the moral arc of the universe bending toward justice. We're here because we love our community in ways that we wish that you would. We cling to the hope that collectively, you have the power to enshrine that love in community-centered policy as well. Implement the SCR now, all of us or none. Thank you.
Mr. Joel Cook.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Cook.
I'm here to express my disappointment, the council's decision to vote against continuing to explore the Sentinel Event Review Process that was recommended by current Governor Josh Stein for the city of Fayetteville. I did listen to the work session where the council discussed the matter, and I was really struggling to understand the logic behind not continuing to investigate something that was pretty well-articulated and effectively boiled down to just asking for additional research into the matter. There wasn't a commitment, it was just further research. That the council decided not to even try to investigate that, it's something that's gonna save lives in the city, and that's concerning to me. And I would hope that with the number of deaths that the community has suffered in recent years, not just from police incidents, but from a number of different causes, that something like a review process to investigate these issues and to see where we can do better would be something that's of interest to you all, especially considering that six months prior to the meeting last week, there was interest in that. So, I'm a little confused about that part of it, and it bothers me. I'm also disappointed that the Office of Community Safety is now being used as an excuse for not investigating those things. It took quite a bit of time and effort in order to get to the point where we're talking about the Office of Community Safety. And three years after that point, nearly a year after being approved for funding, it still doesn't have a director. And so, with that lag time in mind, it feels like the continued use of OCS as something to make it a excuse for not doing other things that could help us is effectively gonna be a poison pill for the Office of Community Safety. Because if it ends up being something that doesn't do all of these things, that keep being kind of piled onto it before it even exists, then that's gonna be the excuse to defund it, you know, two or three years from now. And so, I would really love to believe that the council is invested in the success of OCS and other accountability measures, but with the backtracking that happened with the Sentinel Event Review, and then the way that OCS is being used in those conversations, I'm just very concerned and alarmed at what that is gonna mean as we continue to move forward in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Ms. Lisa Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello, hello, council. I, too, am extremely disappointed to see that council has reversed their decision to implement a Sentinel Event Review Process. I thought the city attorney and her staff did a great job at their, during their research. And I would like to take my time to emphasize to the council that the Attorney General's Office determines whether or not criminal charges will be brought towards a specific officer or group. And this Sentinel Event Review Process is different. It goes beyond just picking out and punishing the supposed... It goes beyond just picking out and punishing the supposed bad apple and instead analyzes conditions that were created and that led up to the event. And using Jada Johnson's case as an example, prior to her killing, when Ms. Johnson begged police for medical assistance, video evidence showed that paramedics were outside her house waiting with a stretcher to take her to the hospital. But then the ambulance suddenly left. Why is that? Did anybody interview the ambulance drivers about why they left? Did the officers cancel the call? What caused an officer to unload seventeen rounds into the struggling, young, twenty-two-year-old mother going through a mental health crisis? Yes, the state did not press criminal charges, but you can't tell me that a single one of you can look her family in the eye and tell them that nothing wrong was done and that there is no reason to approve upon policies. To quote the National Institute of Justice, "Surrounding the bad apple are people who hired them, who created the work environment, and who failed to catch their mistakes. They and the vulnerabilities they contribute will still be with us after the bad apple is removed." We never asked the critical question, "Why did this decision look like the best choice to the bad apple at that time?" This SCR process will help improve the odds of reducing future errors, and that's why it's used by hospitals and the aviation industry. And we recognize the police department has their own internal review process and policies, but once again, we're asking for a non-biased third-party analysis, independent of the police. And Sentinel Events can include episodes that are technically within police policy, but that doesn't mean they're not disastrous to families, to the community relations, and community trust. And last week's work session, the mayor and some other council members made it sound like they supported having independent oversight under the Office of Community Safety. But if that's the case, why is it not an official pillar? Despite our organization's recommendation, this council has not given direction to the city manager that states they wish to make this a core pillar of the office. Fayetteville could have been a leader in our state and be the first city in North Carolina to implement this process whenever there is a police homicide or police misconduct. There's still an opportunity for this council to take additional time to research and learn about the SCR process. The citizens of Fayetteville will be watching this election season.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Our final speaker this evening is Maya Warren. Ms. Maya Warren. Not here. We have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you to the speakers from the public forum. Counsel, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. If we can entertain a motion to, for the consent. See, a motion by Councilmember Hare, I mean, Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Hare, to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item eight-point-oh-eight-four for a separate vote and approve the rest.
All right, is the most, are you good on your second with that? All right, is the motion to approve the consent with the exception of eight-point-zero-eight-four for up or down vote? And seconded, council, any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll look to you for your votes for consent approval. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Councilmember Hondros, eight-point-oh-eight-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't really have a whole lot of commentary. That was the, we moved that forward. I think it was unanimous for the ghost gun regulations. However, the resolution as stated, I cannot support. That's why I asked for a separate vote.
All right, so Councilmember Hare. Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, this is your item. You wanna make a motion?
Yes, if there's no further questions or concerns, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, direct staff to prepare a formal request for our legislative delegation to consider.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Hondros, I mean, could you share more about what it was about the four aspects that were listed that were concerned?
As I mentioned upstairs, it was item two and four.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions or comments, council, I'll look to you for action on eight-point-oh-eight-four. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, and that is eight to two. Those voting in opposition of the ghost gun resolution was Councilmember Benevente and Hondros. Motion carries eight to two. All right, moving to nine-point-oh-one, Linear Park Report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, all. Hi, my name is Brian Del Rosario, retired Captain, U.S. Army, Sergeant, U.S. Marine Corps. I am the chair of the Board of the Linear Park Board. For those of you who don't know, the board is about seven members. It's one out of twenty-six city boards, and it's a board within a board. It's a board within the Parks and Rec Board. And the Linear Park project is two-point-eight miles, starting from Festival Park. It's a walkway, linear as opposed to rectangular or circular, stretching all the way to around where the Police Academy is. For those who don't know about the Linear Park Board, you've probably walked through it many times and not even realized it. So let me give you my brief summary of all the, of these three awesome things that we did last year, calendar year twenty-twenty-four. And I'll be done with your time as fast as I reasonably can. All right, so one of the main goals of the Linear Park Board is to complete the Linear Park Project. It's cost about two-point-one million dollars and take it about twenty years, and it'll be that rare moment this year when you finally see a government project come to completion. This will finish this year. Here's what we accomplished last year. Last year, we were, well, in twenty-twenty-three, the year before that, there's a staircase by Lamont Street that burnt down. Homeless man was trying to keep warm. Yeah, burnt down the staircase. So the following year, last year, twenty-twenty-four, cost about twenty thousand dollars. We fixed it. It's one of our awesome, one of three awesome things we did last year. Number two, the trailhead, which is right behind the dog park, near, what do you call it, the water treatment facility and next to the Police Academy. That's the, that's the main entrance, but arguably, there is no entrance because you can just, it's not blocked off. You can just walk there whenever you want. But that is the main entrance, and we got that just about done. Cost about fifteen thousand dollars. And also last year, we planned for the dedication ceremony. It's gonna happen around May-June of this year. That will happen as soon as we finish that trailhead. That will be, that will be soon. That's the last piece of that puzzle. The park project, once it's done, will transfer from the city, I'm sorry, transfer from being a private entity to belonging to Fayetteville proper. All right. The last thing that's needed is a millstone. The property that is Linear Park is the legacy of the late Harry Shaw. The millstone is important because that's one of the things he wanted before he passed. A millstone is just a giant rock that says it's called Linear Park. That'll cost about three thousand bucks, and it's within our budget. We still got, we still got a little bit of money left over. Issues that need to be addressed. There are no issues that need to be addressed. And coming to a close, one of the recommendations of the Linear Park Board is that once we are no longer needed, that, well, Dr. Wayne Riggins, one of the members of the board, suggested that the park rename or recreate into something called the Central City Parks and Trails Committee to help address Fayetteville's ranking as America's least walkable city. For those of you who know, we've had quite a few pedestrians hit by cars last year. And according to WalkScore.com, we rank number one-hundred-and-thirty out of America's one-hundred-and-thirty cities with a population of over two-hundred thousand as the least walkable of America's cities. And so the intent of renaming the Linear Park Board to the Center City Parks and Trails would be, at least in some way, to address that. And if, you know, not that big of a deal, because it's just gonna be part of Parks and Rec anyway, then, yeah, that's cool. But just, that's the heads up. That's something that the park wants to recommend. I don't have anything further to announce. We're gonna bring this project to a close.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Have a good one.
All right, Councilmember Hare has a question.
No question, Mayor. Just wanted to, once again, reiterate one of the things that we were doing, the Appointments Committee were doing, was trying to get our boards and committees to come down and give reports on what their objectives are, have they met their objectives and their missions. And the Linear Park Board is one of our moving boards, and thank you all for what you're doing. And this is what we are, we are pushing our boards to do. This is one of the objectives the mayor had given us when we started putting the boards together. So thank you for what you do. And I don't say anything here to accept the report, but if that's needed, I will move to, to accept the Linear Park Report.
I didn't type it. I'll have to do that another time.
No, sir. Yeah, that's okay.
My apologies. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Hare to receive the report. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Benevente, I think. Were you seconded and added discussion? All right, all right. So go to Councilmember Benevente and then Thompson. Thompson, was that a second or a discussion?
Whatever, we can just do it. Well, just quickly, your name again, sir?
Brian Del Rosario, Del Rosario, Brian.
Yeah, Brian, you did a really great job, really great presentation.
Thank you.
And just as Councilmember Hare said, I believe, Councilmember Hare, you chair the Appointments Committee? And I believe that there is still vacancies and boards to be appointed to before the end of this month. People can still apply. But Brian, I just felt like you just gave a really good advertisement without realizing it for citizens who, when they get on these boards, how much, clearly you've learned, how much you, how much knowledge you have now about how all of this works. And so I just encourage people, if you wanna get like Brian and be able to do exactly this, join a board and commission here in the city of Fayetteville because you become, you know, a little expert, you know? And just so, I was just really impressed by your presentation as a board member, and just really encourage people to look at you sort of as a role model for getting involved in what can be accomplished. So I just wanna say, great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. It's been an honor.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, if there are no further comments, we'll look to you for action on the motion. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, moving to the next item, we'll move to item ten-point-oh-one. Mr. Yates, update on the Officer of Community Safety mentioned a few times tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Let me get our presentation up. And that should be also on Granicus as well, so it should be available. So tonight, we just wanted to give you a quick update of where we are with the Office of Community Safety, the activities, and what we've been working on at the six-month kind of milepost in the fiscal year. So a quick, brief history. If you go back to the timeline of the discussion, the first time funding was added was in June of twenty-three. That was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars added to the budget, primarily to try to find a director and start that office. We've conducted two recruitments. The challenge in hiring and finding that is that it's really a new concept. And as we work and have the four pillars that we're working through, finding someone with the experience in all four pillars has been a real challenge. So we have an alternative solution, which we're gonna work through, and I'll explain that in just a couple of minutes. But I think we're ready to restart that process with some of the improvements that we've made in that. Then, as you can see, a litany of different discussions with Dr. Tate. Staff presented its analysis in April of twenty-four, this, just this last year, where we looked at all the different offices across the country and within North Carolina. We had our Public Safety Summit. We've adopted our strategic plan, which included OCS. And during the budget, there was two-point-three million dollars of funding included for direct OCS activities. And if you remember during the budget discussion, we also have a lot of activities going on around the city that fall into some of those pillars. So just a reminder of what those pillars are. We have the Mental Health Response and Diversion, the Violence Prevention and Intervention, homelessness and risk reduction, and our youth opportunities. And our overall strategy, as we worked with this in the last six months, has been really to look at how we maximize our partnerships and tap into...
Mr. Yates, can, are we able to put this, to display this on the screen? All right. Yeah, anything presented needs to be mirrored on the screen so the citizen. All right. You know, you gotta, you're working off of one arm. We got you. All right, so Mr. Yates, can you go back through that?
I can.
Not, not all of it, but just the key points that you were...
Sure, absolutely. So in June of twenty-three, there was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars added to the budget, primarily to focus on hiring a director. We talked about some of the difficulties in doing that. We were kind of looking for a unicorn, if you will, and trying to find someone that has experience in all four of the pillars. We were unsuccessful in doing that. We came close a couple of times, but we're just not able to find that person or hire that person. We had some conversation in the spring with Dr. Tate last spring, including an analysis conducted by our staff where we looked at nationally what the models look like, the types of services provided, and the budgets and the types of work done. And I will say this, our four pillars are fairly ambitious around what that office looks like and what it's going to do. So that's part of, of course, going forward, what we're working through. We had our Public Safety Summit at FSU. The council included in May, the OCS office is part of a strategic plan. During the budget, we added two-point-three, you as a council added two-point-three million of funding for direct OCS activities. That was in addition to a number of other services provided and a number of other programs provided throughout the city. And I'll hit on those a little bit more in just a moment. So just a reminder, the four pillars of the OCS, the Mental Health Response and Diversion, the Violence Prevention and Intervention, homelessness and risk reduction, and youth opportunities. And really what our goal has been is working with our partners to try to maximize those resources, their expertise, and their capacity to provide different services in the community. And that's led to some very important discussions and opportunities for us. So if we look at what's kind of been going on, in the Mental Health Response and Diversion, the focus has been on prevention, diversion, and response. The idea being, if we can find ways to head off the crisis event, then it doesn't escalate to some of the issues that we've identified and some of the negative outcomes. So we've been working closely with the Community Paramedic Program to put together and scale up a program that includes a dedicated unit possibly. And they are working through a pilot program with the state where they're administering long-term, or I'm sorry, delayed release antipsychotics. So basically what that means is that they can go out to someone who is not coming to the hospital to get their medications and administer their mental health medications with the hopes of preventing, preventing those incidences. Then diversion, again, having the Community Paramedic Program, and we've worked with Durham Harts, the partnership, in an effort to help, have them come and help give us guidance on framework as well as possibly provide a unit. Going and talking to folks and hoping to divert that call or divert that incident from involving law enforcement. And then response. What does that co-response model look like? Recent experience tells us with the Community Paramedic Program that they respond and at times will dismiss the police when that's not an unsafe situation and so forth. But building on those two programs particularly, and their capacity and experience in providing those services. Talking about violence prevention and intervention, we are still working through our cost of gun violence study with recommendations. This includes looking closer at the shot spotter zones and what qualitative programming we can do. We are in the process of gathering community engagement and learning from the community and how we can impact and achieve those long-term outcomes. We're looking at the efficacy of Shot Spotter or Sound Thinking as its new company name. We're partnering with the Wilson Institute in Durham, at Duke, to look at this similar to how Durham looked at it. And then we're continuing our micro grant programs. And I think those are important to kind of talk about real quick. We have two-hundred thousand, I'm sorry, we have given one-hundred-and-twenty-two awards in our micro grant program, about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And we are continuing that, and our fifth round will close soon. That's done through ECD, and those are out into the community to help change and to work with that violence reduction and those youth opportunities. Okay? So that's, we are working through those. The homelessness and risk reduction, we've changed the operators at the DRC to, in attempt, the goal of improving services, and all indications are that we are improving those services. We've added white flag shelter nights. As council, I know, was concerned over the holiday break and even earlier, as concerning about, concerned about having enough white flag shelter space. We've added the hundred thousand during the budget timeframe for the downtown officer... the hundred thousand during the budget timeframe for the downtown officers to work with the homeless and to help in that process. We're continuing our youth opportunities, again, um micro grants, our youth mental health center with Dr. Hare. That program, that loan has been closed, and he's working on building that out. The SRO program, that kind of fell in our lap, but it's a, uh, you, I know the majority of you have talked to Dr. Watkins, and we're working on a comprehensive approach to how we curb youth and youth violence in the city, um and moving forward with that. And then staff in the office, I mentioned, I was going to mention, uh, talk about this. We are hiring program staff. So in lieu of a director out of the gate, um we decided that it was important to go ahead and start to stand up pieces. So we're hiring two programmatic staff to oversee parts of those pillars so we can get those going. And we are going to restart that director search as a complementary component and trying to build off of that success. So those two positions, we hope to introduce to you in the August, or I'm sorry, the February work session. Um and then we're working with expertise, outside expertise, to kind of help guide the build out with the North Carolina, and I'll get the name wrong, it's Nick Jr. Jody, what's the?
The National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform.
There you go. So they have, um, they're going to come in hopefully and help us kind of build out these pillars as we go along. So we've done a lot of work in building the foundational work and getting the statistical information and informing the process so that we can move forward to achieve council's goals in this process. If you remember back during budget, the primary goal you gave us was try to stand up that, the co-response model and working on a model like Durham Harts. And we're in the process of getting those worked out, um both with Durham Harts, hopefully, and also with the Community Paramedic Program as a continuum, to, as a continuum approach in mental health crisis, not just with the crisis itself, but trying at the front end um around addiction and those other issues as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to bring this back to you. We wanted to bring this back to you and talk through it and kind of give you that update on where we are.
All right, you do have some. Uh Councilmember Benevente, uh then Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that on, in February, you're going to present an idea, or that you guys have already decided that there was going to be this shift towards um restarting the director's role, restart the search for the director's role, and then also prioritizing to other staff members? Could you, could you say that part again, please?
Absolutely. So we have program staff, we're in the process of hiring and finalizing those. And you know, the hiring process is confidential.
Certainly.
They should be on board around the first of February, so we'd like to bring them back and introduce them. The idea is that we, as we work through the community paramedics, the Harts program, the gun violence stuff, and all those different components, that those program managers and, and program folks will be able to pick up those pieces and start in those veins before we have a director, with the idea that instead of finding a director that has all four pillars as a strength, we find a complimentary piece that maybe the two folks we have, have, have deep knowledge in those spaces. And then the director, it's not, um, not as unlikely that we find someone who has all four, experience in all four spaces.
Well, I, and, and I certainly um welcome that. I look forward to making marked, benchmarked progress, like having folks come in. So I, I definitely don't mind that. I just, um, you know, I've said it before, and, and I just feel compelled to, to remind, or just to put, say it again plainly, um, when I met the director uh for Durham's OCS, I mean, he was basically Jeff Yates, right? I mean, he was basically um uh ACM Strickland Olivera. I mean, he was just a project programs guy, and he hired, like you said, the people that maybe have those more um tailored, experienced, uh, uh, you know, histories, job histories to do it. But he was just a guy who got stuff done. Um, so I guess I just want to make sure that we don't feel like we're looking for a unicorn um that has, you know, this incredible experience personally in all these areas, because he might not need that. He just needs to know how to build, you know, a team that can do that. Um, so I guess I just want to make sure that we feel comfortable and uh with, with, with thinking about it in those terms. I guess that's, that's just uh one point related to that. Um, I think that's the only question I have right now. I just have discussion once we get to that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question, I think you referenced that you guys done some community engagement. What, what kind of community engagement was that?
So as part of the gun violence, of course, we're, go back, we, we are continuing our contract with Group Theory, which is a violence interrupter through a peer group and community and the community, but particularly through our gun violence study, as we've worked on that with USC Charlotte Urban Institute. Part of that analysis is to do qualitative work in the shot spotter zones, to look at what are the contributory factors to gun violence and the violence in those zones. The theory being that um not only, that gun violence is driven by a number of factors, not just the indicators you would see necessarily in a crime report. So they've started working with community, with the community through qualitative groups to gather that engagement and gather that feedback through fo- um focus groups and discussions. And that's being done um through Group Theory. They're facilitating that for us on a local level.
So how can a everyday resident get in, get their opinion, put into the conversation who are not a part of these groups?
We have, um, we can put that, we can post that on our Facebook and push that out.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Yates.
Yes, sir.
So can we put this back on the screen, the activities part of it? So just to make sure I'm clear, what percentage of these things would you say we're doing now? Ninety? Ninety-five?
Of these things, I would say we're doing all, um, all of it except for working through the paramedic and the um Community Paramedic and Durham Harts run negotiations of contracts and agreements on that side.
Because those are outside agencies. So the paramedics are run by the county, which is also an elected board that meets on uh Mondays, if anyone wants to make sure that we keep them informed of what, what their responsibilities are in this. And Durham Harts is a whole nother jurisdiction. But other than that, these things here, we're already doing. Because a lot came up tonight as to, you know, we may all have different means to an end, a similar end, but, but we've, over the course of some bad experiences and other things, have learned uh what we could do better, which I think is the goal that everyone has, that, that, that sits on his desk and, and those who spoke and, and others who are watching. But a lot, all of this co-response and mental health and vi- gun violence and youth programs and homelessness, all of these main areas you're saying are already implemented. And we are looking for a director now to, to forge this together. And, and, and I think this is progress. You know, sometimes you have to look at where we are and, and to, to review how far we've come in order to have an appreciation for it. But I do think that we all uh strive to do better. Um, and we may not agree on, on the how, but at the end of the day, I think the outcome is pretty evident. If we're all doing ninety-five percent of these things, one hundred percent of what we control, I think that needs to be highlighted. So um, but uh I'll go back to Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just move, do we have, or I'll ask for clarification, do we need to approve anything or, or adopt or accept anything at this point?
Um, the council can always accept a report.
I'll just make a motion then to accept the report, uh, Mr. Mayor, and then I just have a point of discussion.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to accept the report. Uh, Councilmember Green is the second, I assume? Had a comment, all right. Is there a second to that? Uh, Councilman Hare, was that a second? All right, so second, second, second about here, and then I'll go to uh Benevente and then Green for discussion.
I, I'll, I'll wait for uh, Councilmember Green, please.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
I'm trying to um remain calm and will be really honest. This is something that we worked very, very hard on. And um there was a process set in place. Pretty sure it had a lot of legs and arms to it. A lot of you there in the audience right now were part of that discussion, and we're here and we're very vocal about what we wanted to see. I know someone personally that applied for the Officer of Community Safety Program Director, went through a very, very, very extensive process, came down to the last five, and quite frankly, felt like the office just kind of disappeared. Got an email um from the company that was running the program that basically said the city council had decided to change the direction. Not completely true, but we're going to leave that one alone. But my concern is, you've advertised for a position. If I was that person that was going to be hired as your director, and you had already hired some of my staff for me, I'd have a problem with that. Because as that person is supposed to be the wherewithal and the person with the knowledge and the person that's running the program, it would be like hiring the top surgeon in the United States to perform a certain type of surgery, and then you hire their staff for them instead of them getting to pick their staff team. So I really have some heartburn over this process. I'm not an expert in this field, but I know that I did my due diligence. I got in the car, I went to Durham, I sat with the mayor, I sat with the director, I sat with people who were working the program. I went to the one person that I knew that kind of had all of these traits, or what we said in the beginning, we wanted. They had worked in all different kinds of fields that gave them these pillars. And she works in those fields now. Extensive process. I mean, extensive interviews. I have no problem with that. But if you want the right person for the job, to me, you can't hire their staff for them, because they don't get to use their knowledge and their expertise to get that staff in place. So I, I don't have the answer, because this is kind of the first time we're seeing it. And I don't like that feeling either. I would have liked to have had a little more lead-in. Now, granted, we had the, some of the report. But to get to this point and only have what we have at this point, I, I just feel like we're um kind of working backwards a little bit. So I would like um a little more information, whether it be in the form of um the process from here forward, or a little more input, as Councilmember Davis alluded to, what kind of community input do we, do we seek? Because I feel like that we directed staff to do something, and I don't think that it completely got carried out in a manner that we, that at least I, I'm not going to speak for fellow councilmembers, that I expected it to take. And maybe that was because I had knowledge of the, the interviewing that was happening. I knew that it was happening. I didn't have any knowledge until after the fact as to kind of what the questions were, because I completely stayed out of it. But I, I do think that you went through a very extensive and probably expensive prospect and, and route to not have come up with anything more. I mean, these are all things that I think candidates probably would have presented in their presentations. Um, when I'm looking at them, you know, the, what are your resources? Well, my resources are. What, you know, what, what kind of thoughts do you have? So I-
So well, thank you, Councilmember Green. Um, so uh, Mr. Manager, since, just to, for the listening public, uh, the council hires you and the city attorney, and then the hiring below that is you. So can you speak too?
Yes, sir. Um, and thank you, um, Councilmember Green, um, um, for that, for, for the candor and honesty. Um, I did share with council, um, I'm not sure if it was in, where we're doing our budget discussions or not, but told you that we had had two failed searches for the director. The company that we're using uh um will still honor and do the recruitment for us when we go to this next phase. We'll just have to pay for advertisements. The process that we did use, and that we use for all of our senior-level staff positions, is one where we do an assessment center. And without divulging any candidate's names or anything like that, because that's personnel privacy, um, we utilize staff members not only from the city, from the community, but across the state who are in this field. And I'm, feel very comfortable in saying, based upon the results, which I looked at a couple of weeks ago, um, um, and had planned to reach out to, to others on council as we built up toward this. Um, it was not a decision that I had to make about the director or not. It was a decision that the assessment panel that included local, the staff, and people across the state made, that our last candidate pool was not some, anyone that um had um the experience. But again, I can probably talk about more of that with councilmembers in a less formal setting. But at the time that I mentioned this to council, I think it was during the budget sessions, um, it was at the same time that the council had allocated almost another million dollars to OCS at a budget work session. And I told the staff that we could not be where we were then, at the end of this fiscal year, and not having put something on the ground. And that is when we ramped up, as Jeffrey said, and we were possibly in the process of hiring three staff people. Because if you'll also recall, last January, when we met as a council, I pushed the council, along with our consultant for strategic planning, very hard for us to come up with the four pillars. And um the councilmembers who were, were there, I said, what are the, what are the legs to this stool that we call OCS? And there was really not consensus among everyone on council at that time. And so we really pushed it. We really pushed it with council, tell us what this looks like. The mayor and others amplified that when we went to the session we had at Fayetteville State University with Dr. Tate facilitated. It was along those four pillars. You did it again, and, and with the budget sessions, when I think it was Councilmember Benevente who said, we need to have something as it relates to mental health. And Councilmember Behar was very clear in a separate meeting that we had at, in this chamber, where he said, are we talking call diversion? Are we talking alternative response? That was all the direction I needed to know, that I could not come back here again at the end of this fiscal year and not have some response to you about mental health. And so the proposals that we have in front of us range from three point two million dollars to over seven hundred thousand dollars for us to do, as the mayor said, for things which are in the county's purview. That is the reality of where I'm as the manager, I'm at at the moment. I cannot afford to hire someone who is going to be a flash in the pan and um is not going to take us, or can't handle the stress, because it kills me most days. And for someone to come in and stand up a program that last January, I pressed the council, not just because I want to press you, and I'm coming, Mayor, not that I want to press the council, but I needed to know what success looked like for you. And you gave that to me. You gave it to me at the, at the session we had at Fayetteville State, and you gave it to me when you gave me the budget. And we have been faithful in executing that. I agree, I would love nothing better than to have um been able to have offered the job to Dr. Gerard Tate, which if he would come, I'd pay him now. Because he is someone who clearly understands the area, he understands it across the state, across the country, he's a regional and national expert. But he wouldn't come, and the other two people that we interviewed also, one of whom we extended a hire to, um, the first go-round backed out. And so just as we're doing with the police chief, um, the police chief, whoever comes in, will have some leeway to hire an assistant chief, because right now we only have one. So Todd Joyce, I need you to get plenty of rest, that you don't get burnt out. But there's going to be opportunity for that. There's also going to be an opportunity as we move forward with our chief financial officer, which we're in the throes of trying to get a selection candidate there. They will walk into an office where they will have an opportunity to hire some additional staff. We also, um, Willie, um, our CF, CIO, has told us that she is retiring at the end of this fiscal year as well. When whoever her replacement is, they will have an opportunity to come in with the vacancies that we have to hire some staff. But what we were missing right now is I don't have anyone on staff that can do case management. One of the people that we have has, I think it's more than thirty years of direct case management of working, Mayor, this is too important, I apologize. I need two more minutes, as y'all did at the last meeting. Um, because this is something that is not every day that I get to stand up something on behalf of council. And I want to make sure we get it right. And hiring a director is one of the most important things related to that. So one of the people has extensive experience, over thirty years, direct case management with people, to be able to move people from where we find them to where we want them to be. The other person has probably, um, I, I really wish I could, I've texted them to see if I could announce it, uh, to violate their personnel privacy, but they've not texted me back, um, is someone that is very well-known in this region, and they will be able to head up for us some of our juvenile um justice issues and prevention issues as well. We simply could not wait another six months to try to get a director. But based upon what we did when we did two national searches, we had people that may have had expertise in one area or two, but when we actually put them through a rigorous assessment center, and it was very rigorous, um, the, they pull, the assessors did not feel that we were doing anyone service to put them in a position where they may not have had the skills. I'd be happy to talk to you, because I would love to know and hear more from you about that, because I need council to have my back when I go out and I offer and extend a hire. And that means that I need to know what you're looking for, and I need to make sure that you understand that when we select these candidates, we're selecting them not based on what Doug wants, we're selecting them based upon what the community needs and what I've gotten from council. Um, the hardest thing of being the manager- The hardest thing of being the manager is a police chief calls you and there's someone who's gotten injured or death. The other one is when I have to go to a department director or staff person that we've hired and we've brought on board, and they tell me that it's not what they thought it was going to be, or that we have to remove them from their position. And I don't, do not believe, and I stand on this, that the two recruitments we've had so far have yielded that because we didn't have clarity around the position and the role. But with these two positions and all of the work that council has done, you've done, you've done, whether it's the homeless committee, whether or not it is...
So you're coming up on your two minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate you, Mayor.
We've got to bring it on. Because what I don't want to do, and I know the city attorney's kind of giving us, giving us a leeway, but it's not typical that we get that far into your applicants.
No, 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 it's not.
Particularly in a public setting, so I don't want to...
Yes, sir, it is. And I'm very careful about the personnel privacy component of it. But for the people who are listening to the council who are here and anyone in the audience, we get it as a staff, what the council directed us to do, and we're doing it. And you have, I've said this to y'all four years ago, members of council, there's no one else in this community that is doing homeless prevention like you guys are doing it. There's no one else in this community that is doing violence prevention like you're doing it. There's going to be no one that's doing mental health prevention on the street, on the street like y'all are doing it. Y'all are leaders across the state. When we look across the state, you have something in Wilmington, New Hanover County, you have something in Greensburg, Guilford County, you have something in Durham, Durham County, I think you have something in Asheville. Are there any others that we're missing? Winston-Salem, you are a leader among the state. But I would welcome into conversation with council to get further direction on this, but we are cooking with gas on this OCS with you guys.
And we appreciate it, and a lot of those examples you named, and I do need to get to Councilmember Benevente and Hare, have support from the county part of the government. You know, Durham and Durham County are lockstep on a lot of that stuff, because they're pretty much the only municipality in that county, and I know some of those other areas too. But I think we're leaning in, but I want to make sure council that we are a policy of budget, that we, the execution and the administration of it, but these areas are policy issues and there are budget requirements attached to it, and I think that's the part we want to get to. I don't want to get us down a road of individual applicants and, you know, but that is a conversation that Councilmember Green has some valid concerns about that you can answer. Councilmember Benevente and Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say, I share in Councilmember Green's frustration, I appreciate her willingness very early on, when she was first elected, along with Councilmember Davis, and joining me and visiting Durham's Hartz program, because I really, really needed both of them to get a majority of this council, to get behind this OCS. So I always want to be very grateful to them for that. While I share in the concern about wanting a director and needing a director, I'm willing to accept sort of where we're at and what hopefully is going to be a very, very exciting February work session where we're getting to see some real tent poles put in the ground. Because I also get that perhaps our city council hasn't always been super clear with our staff with what we want to do with any of this, because even just today during this meeting, I'm still hearing a lot of the misinformation being expressed about OCS. The idea that this activity slide that we're already doing, 90 to 95% of it, is incredibly misleading the way that the mayor said it. Some of this stuff is happening, but it's not having the impact that this community needs it to have.
Well, no, no, no. 95% is we're doing it.
No, no, but we're not doing it well.
So what, what...
So we're not doing it well. So I'll give you the example, I'm not sure why you're going back and forth, is my time to speak here, Mr. Mayor, and trust me, I'll be glad to go back and forth with you, but what I'm saying is that when it comes to the activities here, there are some people who respond to it when the police do it, whether it's the PALS program or whatever it is, there's a lot of people that the second they see FPD on it, they're not going to participate. So we're missing out on so many people that ought to be receiving services, that because we only do it in this one-dimensional way, they never get reached. They never get reached. So when we have a more effective way of approaching these things, we touch that many more people. So to say that we're doing 99 to 95% of this, some of it we're doing well, some of it we're just technically checking a box, but to say that somehow, you know, this is, you know, OCS is not completely necessary, I think is the misleading aspect of it. The other thing I really have to push back on is this idea that this is a county responsibility, because that is the argument that is abused on this city council, because we showed our belly immediately when we had to spend money on SROs and TCOs. We didn't hold our position in a seller's market as the one with the product that was needed. We immediately started doing whatever the county wanted and spent every dollar that we were going to be willing to give. So let's not act like we're so, you know, careful with the way that we operate in doing county responsibilities, because when it's convenient not to, we don't. The idea of a city council is for us to be able to maneuver very, very agile compared to anyone else. And if we can do a scaled version of a lot of these things, just like in Durham, the county will help us scale it up and be able to do it not just in one zone or during certain hours, but 24 hours and eventually county-wide. So this idea that we're doing things that the county is responsible for, we're also responsible for the health and well-being of our citizens. And so that's what this OCS is going to do. If we could only do it at a small scale because that's all our budget allows us to do, that's fine. It'll show a proof of concept so that the county can then put there double our budget, $600 million, towards doing more of what we've already proven is something that we can do. So, you know, let's just keep in mind, whether or not we're technically doing or checking some of these boxes, clearly with five homicides so far this year, we are failing at doing them effectively. And we're not going to just continue to pass the buck or point fingers at the county when we can absolutely, we have the gumption and the ability to do something here in the city of Fayetteville, the time to do that is now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. When this OCS item was brought to us, information came, information came, information came for a long period of time, and it took me some time to get there. I think I may have even mentioned it to my colleague, okay, I see what you're trying to do, I see what's being said here, I will support it, because it took me a while, I didn't start off that way. Now, to where we are now and to the objectives for the different supports that we have that I'm looking at on the screen here, we already know, as we did over at the Fayetteville State meeting, that we have a whole lot of partners to make this work. And then we had Dr. Tate to come in and others to sort of talk to us and sort of give us their opinion, professional opinion on the direction that this OCS and the director should go. So I'm still in support of it, of OCS, I'm still in support of us, Mr. City Manager, in getting the director. And it was good to hear from my colleague that brought this, that he's somewhat satisfied in some of what we have been presented here as we move forward. What my question is here is, as far as the director goes, I want us to do this right, because it took me some time, as I said, to come on board and give it my green vote. Have we reached out to Dr. Tate that facilitated for us when he came, as far as any kind of help in the direction to seek a person for this position? And whenever the requests, I guess it's RFP, RFQ, whatever, goes out, is it put together with what I'm looking at here on what the scope would be, so that the people that are looking at a possibility of wanting to take the job can see what he or she would be up against in trying to move forward, along with bringing in their professional view on moving forward? Whomever would like to.
So, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Hare, for the question, Councilman. The process, obviously, as we get through this, we're working with a recruiter, and part of that assessment center process that the manager mentioned is a discussion about what the state of the office is, what their plans would be. So the difference between the last two times we did it versus today is we have a more formed, programmatic view of what that looks like and what those components are. So I would anticipate, as we work through this recruitment this time, that we may have a little different pool. For instance, when we had community safety, a lot of the applicants were risk managers or safety folks at factories and so forth. So as we've kind of worked down this list and as we've worked through this programmatically, we'll be able to put a little more meat on the bone, if you will, around what the job is and what the expectation and what the kind of the programmatic perspectives that we're looking at, which we just didn't have in the first two recruitments. But now it's much more, it's a more well-formed, conceptually, office, as well as the pillars are defined. If you remember, we didn't really have those pillars in place until June of last year, and we had done our first two recruitments at that point. So I think it's going to be a better recruitment because we have better information and we know more about where we're going than when we did originally.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, so the next time the request goes out, which will probably be...
We're working through that. Jerry, do you know when we'll be opening that back up?
Not trying to press, just give, kind of...
Probably in the next couple of months, I'd imagine.
So the next time that it goes out, you're saying the scope of work or the scope of objectivity for this would be a part of that request?
Right, we'll work with our consultant to change the recruitment. They do a flyer or a advertisement, so we'll work with them to change that, to be more reflective. We'll reach out to Dr. Tate to see if he's got any connections again. We'll go through all that process. We'll also spend some time with our recruiter, talking about alternative strategies to try to recruit this maybe a little different than we did last time. So we intend to try to find a director, and again, with a better well-formed idea of what this looks like, I think we'll have more luck.
Yeah, well, as I end, and I do appreciate it, and thank you for giving me this moment, Mayor, but all of these bullets that we have here, everyone that we met as far as with partners, projected partners over at Fayetteville State, I thought that was fantastic, and I'm still on board in support and, you know, full speed ahead. So thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. And, you know, I do want to address my colleague here. At the end of the day, if you put this list back up here, he's yet to tell me anything that we're not doing now. Are the programs working to their perfection, but to have something that has been neglected and underfunded for decades, and to have this in place and to making the progress we've made in 24 months, I think needs to be commended. Now, at the end of it, you continue to refine and perfect. No one is saying that this is it by far, but you do have to acknowledge the fact that even before this became a structured name here, prior to the election of some, co-responses after a major incident happened here, co-response was brought to council and approved a number of years ago.
Yes.
Outreach programs to the youth, a number of years ago, refining older programs like the PALS program, a number of years ago. Is it saying that this is all we need to do? I don't think anyone has said that. But at the end of the day, you do have to acknowledge that things have happened in a positive direction that are moving this forward. I do agree that everyone is eager for this, and at the end of the day, as passionate as my colleague is, without the support of five other people, this would not even be a conversation piece. So there was support amongst colleagues, previous council and this one, to get this to a point. Now, as we work as a community to refine it, there is a role that the county plays in this. Statutorily, they are responsible for health and human-related services. They have the contract with Alliance, they have the contract with the hospital, they have the contract with the paramedic program, other partners that we need to do this. And so at the end of the day, it is some of their responsibility in that, and, you know, and I know we've got new commissioners that I think will be good partners in the long run. But at the end of the day, we still have to acknowledge that, and we won't let anyone take that away, that both steps have been made to improve the outcomes of the people in some of these tragic situations in this community, and they need to be acknowledged, and they are on that board today. I'll need you to clean mine up, clean yours. All right, let's go, and then we got to vote.
No, no, I agree with you, Mayor Colvin, and you've made progress well before I was on council, without a doubt. Before Hawkins, the previous chief, she presented some things on community microgrants, you know, before I was on council, there's definitely examples. Mr., the gentleman who does prove, again, so without a doubt, I am obviously very passionate about this, but I appreciate, you know, the ways that everyone on this board has given me time outside of council to sit with them, to talk with them, to really be able to explain a lot of this stuff, and that's how we got to this point. So I agree with you totally there. We touched on a lot of things, but clearly today, the community members are still saying that what we technically have done in the past is just not getting the job all the way done. So I think that's, for us to finally kind of put it into, and OCS is how we all got to this point, alternate response is very important. That's the biggest thing that we, if there's a 5% of that 95, that 5% is definitely alternate response. I think once we get to that point, I'll really be singing Doug and Jeffrey's praises for all that they have accomplished, although I'm already very excited about what you guys are getting ready to do in February. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yates. Thank you, councilors there. Most, well, are we receiving the report? Okay. All right, that is a motion?
That was my motion, Your Honor.
All right, all right. This is motion by Councilmember Benevente to receive the report, second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion we've had, council will look to you for your votes to receive the report. Thank you, Ms. Yates, Mr. Hewitt, councilmembers.
Thank you.
All right. Who are we missing? Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, she's in the affirmative session. All right. So council, moving to the next item that we have, be the public hearing to consider closing a portion of Otis F. Jones. So with the public hearing, as we prepare to hold a public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input, individuals desiring to speak in the hearing must have signed up, the city clerk by name and address prior to the start of tonight's meeting. We begin with the staff presentation, then we'll move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed of the items being discussed. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record, and may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds, and when the timer rings, that means that your time has expired. And with that, I'll stop, Ms. Keisha.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. The county manager has petitioned the city to close a portion of the Otis F. Jones Parkway. It's currently the driveway into the parking lot that is going to be redeveloped into the new Crown Center. The portion is shown on the map on the screen. The public hearing was set for tonight by city council on November 25th. The real estate division has contacted all the local utility companies per the statute as required. There are several local utility companies who have utilities in the area, so we will be reserving a utility easement in that area for the city, PWC, and those utility companies. We also contacted fire, EMS, and the police department to see if closing this portion was going to inhibit their times in any way. It is not, due to the fact that it is not going to impede traffic in any way along the Otis F. Jones Parkway. The property was posted on both ends so the public would be made aware, and we sent certified letters to all the adjacent property owners as required. It was published in the local newspaper also to give everyone notification of the possible closing. And that is really all, unless you have any questions.
All right, if so, we'll save them to the end of the public hearing, and with that, we'll open up the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
We have no speakers for this item.
All right, so with that, we will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions or motions for council? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion at this time to adopt the resolution and order the closing of the portion of Otis Jones Highway for the development of the Crown Event Center.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on said motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, unanimous, you got it all?
Thank you.
Pretty easy, Deb, Ms. Keisha, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, council, moving to the next item is Phase 5 Annexation Utility Improvement, Project Area 32. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. to you about the Phase Five Annexation for Project Area 32 East, Section 1. To review, we'll go over some information, we'll go over the project areas and some events that have happened previously, some events that are coming up to date. We'll talk about the cost of property owners, financing options, and next steps as we move forward through the assessment for this particular project. To share a history with you, since it's been a little while since I've been able to come up here and talk to y'all. Timeline as far as Phase Five Annexation goes, in 2005, annexation went into effect. Construction began in 2007. In the 18 years since we commenced construction, 25 projects have been completed, almost 6,000 connections have been made available. Construction is still ongoing at this point in time. There are nine project areas that are currently either in process or under construction, and there are 11 areas that are currently in design stages. Like I said, to date, we've completed 25 areas, approximately 6,000 properties that we're able to connect. Just to give you comparison, when we started the process in 2008 with areas A1 and 2C, it was approximately 617 properties that cost approximately $10,000 per property in order to annex them. As of 2025, for this last area that we just finished, for 132 properties, it was just shy of $13.25 million. It was over $100,000 per property in order to complete the construction. To remind council, as far as the annexation steps go, PWC works on the design. Once the designs reach a certain point, we move to preliminary assessment, at which point we come to council and ask for permission to move forward. Same thing with construction, we'll come to council to ask you guys permission to go forward. Once construction is completed, we'll come back and talk about the assessment role, and we are given permission to move forward with the assessments that they can be levied and customers can connect. These are the list of the areas that have been completed. Some areas have been moved up due to construction and other areas, the 295 bypass and such. These are the areas that are currently in process. And like I said, there are 11 currently that are under design that are not listed here. If you would like to look at them, they are available on the PWC website under our Annexation heading. For reference, Area 32 East, Section 1, is in District 6, Councilmember Thompson's district, includes the neighborhoods of Wendover Place, Hickory Run, Pinecrest, and Pine Ridge Acres. Project area events to date, the appraisal notification letters were mailed back in 2019, and the resolution to adopt this area was also passed in 2019. The construction started in 2022 and was completed in 2024. At this point in time, we have, PWC has completed all the community meetings, we have mailed all the notification letters, and we are here today to have the public hearings so that we can have the final assessments done so that we can then assess them and move Cost of property orders has not changed. Typical cost for a single-family residential lot is $5,000. Other properties that do not fit the specific description of a single-family residential lot are charged a per-front foot rate of 55, 56, plus the average lateral charge. No payment is due from anybody until construction is complete and the assessment role is adopted by council. For upcoming events, after the public hearing tonight, the assessments will be confirmed, if you so wish via consent agenda at the next meeting. After the confirmation, PWC will mail the notification letters, and within two weeks of confirmation, we will also hold the community meeting to let the homeowners know about the next steps in the process. As far as payment options for the $5,000, residents can pay in full. There is no interest within the first 51 days. Financing is also available up to 10-year term. The prime rate of the loans is set by city council not to exceed 8%. The prime rate as of January 1 of 2024 was 8.5%, so the interest rate for the loans taken at this point will be capped at 8%. Homeowners can opt for manual or monthly installments, and there is no penalty for any early repayment. Finally, financial assistance is available for those who qualify via the City of Fayetteville. It is the Office of Department of Economic Community Development. And at this point in time, there's no action needed from you guys, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Stay close by. We will hold a questions to the end of the public hearing. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Mr. Michael Morgan.
Mike, how you doing, sir?
How y'all doing? I don't envy your position. Just before I start talking, all I'm asking for is some fairness here. Good evening. As I begin speaking, I'm going to ask you to imagine yourself being a taxpayer in my shoes, and we are here about a house you own and live in and are discussing this assessment and how it affects you. I purchased my lot and built my home in '06 purposely out of city limits at the time. Unfortunately, shortly after, found my property being annexed with the Pitts Big Bang Annexation, which was illegal at the time based on the average number of people per square mile needed in order to do what they did for the forced annexation. Fayetteville did not have the necessary volume of people per square mile in order to do that, but the citizens unfortunately did not and could not unite in an orderly fashion to fight back like Gates IV did. We were forced in, and against many landowners' wishes, we were brought into the city and also promised all these great services. I will attest firsthand, my qualities of service went down. Police response is slower than sheriff's response previously was. Garbage collection is subpar compared to who we had before. Other than that, I got absolutely nothing but a bigger tax bill every year. Since being annexed, I've paid Fayetteville City taxes and stormwater fees that I didn't have sewer water in the amount of $33,552.77, which doesn't even include the county's portion of taxes. This $33,552.77 is what Fayetteville took from me for basically garbage pickup. And the utility services promised, they just finished up in my neighborhood 18 months ago, so that took 16 and a half years to get that. Now, in my case, this is where I will not benefit from these services. I already paid for these taps in 2010 on another side of my property, and I've had PWC service and been paying for it since then. I have the receipts here with me, excuse me, for the PWC connection from 2010. So even though I told the contractor at the time that he was doing this in my neighborhood, I didn't need the taps, he said he had to do what was on the plan. So if you assess me, I will be double taxed and penalized more than my neighbors and other citizens have to pay. This is completely unfair to me and the property I own. I respectfully ask that you consider this unique situation and exempt my personal from this assessment in the issue of fairness. I paid the tap fee with PWC and the city more than a decade ago. I will not benefit from these services and have not touched the taps they put in and have no plans to. Please imagine yourself in my shoes and do what's right and fair and exempt my property from this fee as it would be double taxation in my mind illegal. Is that my time?
No, you still have 30 seconds.
I mean, it's just, on every level, it's completely wrong. I had already paid for and received these services. I have my receipts, I have the documentation. For PWC to, again, or the Fayetteville to levy this $5,000 assessment on me, it would be completely unfair. I've had this the whole time, almost as long as I've owned the property since 2010, honestly. And I want to say I bought it in '06, '07, built my house, something like that. But for them to, for me to have to pay this again, it's absurd. And all I'm asking is for y'all to put yourself in my shoes, if you were me, and just be fair. I don't, I'm not here to cause problems, drama, or stress on y'all. I see that y'all already have enough.
Well, thank you, Mike. And, you know, we don't control the operations of the utility, but hopefully the young lady can find out about that, because if you paid for it, I'm not sure how they do that, but she can probably answer that specifically. But we appreciate you and thank you. Thank you for that. Good to see you again.
Mayor, our next speaker...
Oh, Lexi, in the back. It'll either be Lexi or a young lady there that could answer that.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Fallon Proctor. Mr. Fallon Proctor?
I'm not reading Proctor.
Not here. We have no further speakers, Mayor.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilmember Hare.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I hope that the, Mr. Morgan can be helped in some way. I don't really have a question other than just wanted to state that here it is 2025, and when this item came up before us, I sat there to the right, and I won't call my other colleague, but a colleague and I said, guys, let's don't do this. It's too big. It's too much, you know, let's take little pieces. And nobody, at least eight of them would not support that. And me and my colleague voted against it then. I'm still just as irate and with how I feel and how the residents feel. Still, here it is. We're still dealing with this. I think what we had, 16 or 17 lots, I mean, phases, sections in. So I understand how you feel. I just wanted to say that, sir. I know it has been. It's frustrating to a lot of our residents.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Benevente and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's appropriate, can our presenter from PWC speak, or, I'm sorry, speak or to what Mr. Morgan was kind of sharing, because I'm very, very impressed with his ability to kind of advocate for himself and organize himself in a way that brought this to his attention and benefit. But are there potential other Mr. Morgans out there, or is this issue maybe, in the way you understood it, or the way it was described, is a unique one?
It is unique. I am aware of some other areas that were provided either water or sewer earlier due to other issues within the neighborhood. So I think it was in the last area that we covered, there were some customers who had already been annexed as far as water, and now they're being added as part of sewer. So yes, there was some, there were some homeowners who had to pay the lateral on the tap, and then they were paying the assessment as their area was added, specifically to Mr. Morgan. We'll be happy to look into it and see what we can find out.
Well, that's great to hear. I think he's earned that. I think, I'm curious still about, is this now that maybe he's brought it to y'all's attention, or is this something you guys had already thought about before or anticipated? Like, is there a process for other Mr. Morgans to also get this kind of attention or help?
Yeah. So as part of the process, PWC communicates with residents and homeowners throughout the whole entire. So they'll do the mailing notifications, they'll do neighborhood meetings. There are, I think, three neighborhood meetings. There are several pamphlets that go out. So there are several touchpoints that happen over the course of the design, construction, completion, assessment. And it's like, there are several points where we talk to people. And in addition to all that, there are several points where the engineers or the, you know, other employees who will go out and actually interact with different customers and residents in the field. So I guess to answer your question, yes, there's probably someone who has spoken with him at some point in time, as, you know, I'll be happy to go talk to him. So these do end up coming up. There are some one-offs here and there.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Mr. Morgan, do you want to share?
Yes, I would like you guys to know that I was actually one of four or five people from my neighborhood that left with PWC down there, and I went to their facility down there and even discussed it with them then. I pretty much got, well, I'm gonna get you with so-and-so, and we're gonna get so-and-so. And I just got crickets every time in our neighborhood meetings. There wasn't a PWC rep. Bill Chris attended the meeting for us, and he advocated for us and was a great man and councilmember, but unfortunately, he wasn't able to get anywhere with it either. But I was repeatedly told that I was gonna get looked into, taken care of, looked after, and just hit brick wall after brick wall. And I was crickets, nobody cared after for me one bit. I looked after myself and paid the bill, and now they're trying to hit me with another bill. I appreciate that, Mr. Morgan.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. I mean, I can imagine the same. I can imagine, you're right, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I know that PWC has to kind of come to us to get some of this stuff approved at the appropriate time, and this may not be the right avenue or vehicle to discuss maybe a bigger issue or sort of a separate management issue. And I know that, do we meet periodically with our appointments, our appointees to their, the PWC commissioners or folks that we appoint to discuss many things, maybe to include this?
As a full board, we don't. But we have a liaison, and we do meet with the chairman of the board and the CEO, which we did. Now, this is the public hearing part, which this was what this is designed to do. I would say if there are questions that the council has, which I certainly want to know, because it's not fair for someone to pay it five years ago and then to pay it when you finally get it in, that before we vote on a consent, that we need to have those questions answered, because we do have to approve the assessment. So it could be a good time to get those answers and to see if there's an opportunity to create some policy for people who can verify that they've paid one time so they're not paying again. I mean, so I'm open to that if council, but I want to hear from the liaison, Councilmember Thompson.
This is for the liaison as well, Mr. Mayor, just so that he can just answer it all, because, you know, part of me feels like, do we want to hold on to this until we get that kind, till we get that kind of feedback?
That'll be next week. There's no action tonight.
Understood, understood.
But point taken, point taken.
Thank you.
Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm kind of shocked at some of these proceedings. I thought this was going to go by easy. I'm probably sitting here because of annexation. That's one of the reasons I ran for city council, because my neighborhood was one of the first ones to be annexed. And I was affiliated with PWC from the beginning, so I probably know more about annexation than most. The assessment can never be changed. It's always going to be $5,000, because if it was $5,000 in 2007, it's going to be $5,000 in 2037. I get phone calls all the time about, I don't want to say faults, but about misinformation when it comes to PWC on how much to be assessed. And most of it is for the frontage property, the 55, 56 that you have to pay once you are connected. Sometimes that is calculated wrong, where you have charged people in excess of thousands of dollars where it shouldn't have been. I have a history of saving people money because of this. One individual, I saved $21,000. Who to contact? All, most of annexations, 25 through 34, is all in my district. I have monthly meetings with all of my constituents. You notice that my chat and choose, and answering questions all the times about annexation. I don't have to go through the guru. I go through the CEO to get my questions answered, to make sure that my constituents get the answers that, I want to say that they want to hear, but are rightful to everybody, no matter what conditions are. Yours problem, Mr. Morgan, is unique. I have not heard of anybody who is already has a PWC connection to be assessed an additional assessment fee after already being connected for I don't know how many years, 2006 you say, or 2010. That is an issue you could have brought to my attention. I could have raised the flag and got you an answer. But I, well, I understand, I'm not blaming you, sir, but I'm just saying, people can't get you the right answer if you don't know the right person to talk to. I hope that your situation will be resolved by talking to Lexi, because those are the professionals back there that can give you all the answers to what you're looking for. And you mentioned something else about the neighborhood. I have 33 communities. I have 18 on my community watch list, and I've never been to one of your community watch meetings because I didn't know about any. That is another way I could have been giving the information to your entire community. Wendover Place, y'all have, y'all have community meetings?
And we reactivated the homeowner associations to deal with the water and sewer situation.
See, now that is another reason that I could have helped you in, because one of the few HOAs that I had been a president of for five years, I had those answers also.
Was it Bill Chris attended the meeting that he said he was our councilor of the district?
That was back in 2017, 18 was the last time?
19, 19.
I got you. Well, hopefully we can get you the answers that you're looking for. If not, I will give you my contact information, so if you or anybody else in Wendover Place have any issues with annexation.
So, 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 because it's a formal public hearing, we can't, can't do that part, but, because the audio is not being picked up. But I think we're clear, we're going to need some clarity on how we plan to handle unique unicorn situations before members of, some members of the board, I can speak for myself, I'm comfortable voting for the assessment next week. So that gives us a week. So please work with Mr. Morgan, okay? All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right. All right, good job, council. All right, moving to, moving to the next item? There is no next item. All right, well, y'all knocked it out. All right, most adjourned? Have a good evening. y'all knocked it out. All right, most adjourned. Have a good evening.